Okay. I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoni Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, June 6, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The first order of business tonight is we need to reorganize the board. We are missing one member. I don't know if you want to wait to... He sent me a message that he couldn't make it tonight. So if you want to wait till next month, see if we have a full board, or you want to do it tonight?
I'd be willing to do it tonight, I would think. See, in my opinion, we'd leave alone Chair Coates.
Okay. Is that our motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Tosino, to have myself remain as the chair and Mr. Fitzpatrick as vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Okay, the first case is a continued public hearing for Scott Fontaine and Tina Cantone, case number 2021-0583 Webster Street. And they were in last month and we've continued it to this month.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, yep, for the record, Mr. Fitzpatrick is going to recuse himself. So I think the applicants join us on Zoom.
Yep, we're here.
Yes, we're here. Good evening.
Good evening. So if you could just explain to the board what's changed from last month, that would be great.
So we came to the board last month with plans, and it was requested that we go down to 12.75 variance. So we have the drawings drawn up, and we were hoping that you will consider accepting our variance request.
Okay. All right. If you all remember, last month, they were adding on a three-car garage, which brought them to within six feet of the lot line, which the board didn't... wasn't comfortable with. And when I looked at their plan, they had cut it down to like an oversized two-car garage in there, 12.75 feet from the lot line, which is just over 50% of the requirement. And they submitted plans, and they did submit a new plot plan stamped by a surveyor showing the building will now be 12.75 to the closest lot line. It's on the last page of their set of plans. So I don't know if the board has any questions for the applicant?
I do not. I'm satisfied with the drawings and satisfied with what they had done. So we'll get to the rest of the board.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay, great.
I don't have a problem.
All right. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this case? Okay, hearing none. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Forget. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. Would the board like to move and make a decision tonight?
Sure. I have the motions that we... After the plan submitted, I don't have the docket number that we have on there. I don't have a list.
Oh, you don't? Here's the next one, John.
Let's see, we approved the plans for Tina and Scott. Number is 2021-05, with the plans in hand, submitted to the building department, and be part of the record.
Okay. And if I could just add, and the plan's showing that the building is...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Showing a 12.75.
To the closest point.
Closest point is 12.5.
Right. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve the plan as submitted, the revised plan as submitted, I should say.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the vote is unanimous, and your application is approved. We'll get a decision drafted and get it to the town clerk as quickly as we can.
All right, thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Great, have a great evening, everyone.
Okay, good night, you too.
Bye.
Okay. The... Oh, boy. You know what? The next case is written up at 7:15, and we can't start it prior to... We can't start it prior to the posted time. However, just have a couple of housekeeping things we could do.
Minutes, whatever.
Yeah, and I just want to let the board know, I got an email today from Suzanne Kane, and as of last night, no members of any board can attend a meeting through Zoom. It says that concerning board and committee meetings, the Board of Selectmen voted, "All board/committee members must attend in person. Any experts or other attendees may attend remotely by decision of the chairman." Please let your board know, as I do not have everyone's email. So I know in the past, when people couldn't make it physically, they allowed us to do it remotely. With the board's permission, I'd like to write a quick note to the town administrator and just tell them that we meet once a month. And in the event that we can't get a quorum, but people can attend remotely, it would... that would help all the applicants, rather than have them wait another month.
Exactly.
So maybe only in a troubling situation, they could make an exception. You know? It's... I'm going to send that letter out, or email out, and...
I do Zoom three times already, so...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And you know what? Go ahead, Ron.
I just think it loses a lot of... A lot of flavor. The last time, when you were on Zoom at this last meeting, it was difficult to... You know what?
Yeah.
I thought it was really difficult, because it's... You're trying to hear that thing, and sometimes it doesn't come in as good as it should. I think that it's better off when everybody's here and...
I think that's everybody's preference, is definitely to do that. I was just thinking of the applicants, if they wait a month to get on the agenda, and then something comes up, and...
Well, in that case, then, I would leave it up to them. If they wanted people to come in by Zoom, or if they want the feeling of the committee, because you can't get it on that thing.
No. I agree with that, you can't. I'm just... Well, why don't I discuss it with town administrator and see if there's any flexibility in it?
Yeah.
You know? I mean, you don't know, people could turn up sick, or do whatever, and...
And again, it's against the applicant, or maybe the two or three that would be here in control.
Yeah.
Special permit.
Yeah. All right.
I agree with you there. I mean, because I've used it.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's not the preference, but it works.
Works. I get the documents just as well as anyone else, you know, we're sending them.
Yep. Okay. We had planned to go into executive session tonight to discuss a case that's in litigation, and it didn't make it on the agenda. And I spoke with town council today, and he suggested that we see if we could hold another... It's going to take 10 minutes, another meeting, some morning, some evening, next week. And just, I believe everybody got an email today that outlined what it was about. So I don't know if... It has to be posted for 48 hours. It didn't make it on the agenda. I spoke to the town clerk, she's like, "It's got to be on there 48 hours in advance, otherwise you can't do it." So I truly think it's going to take less than five minutes, but it's got to be posted properly. And so I don't know if anybody's got availability next week.
We've kind of opened up, opened up, no problem.
Well, if you... We could do it early morning, we could do it late afternoon.
Anytime, just let me know.
Okay. I'll be here in the morning of the 10.
Oh, jeez. All right, why don't I have Maria post it? And it's like, if you want to do something like 8:00 in the morning, we'll be out here quarter past.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right. Yeah, it's just...
Look, man.
And if you have... If you've got that email, if you have a chance to just look through it, that's what it's all about. And so, anyway, I will speak to town clerk tomorrow, get a meeting date. I'll try to make it 8:00, one morning next week.
Mm-hmm.
Can we get in the building at 8?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you'd like to keep with it.
What, after the 10? Ken said he'd come open the door.
Ooh. On Friday? Yeah. All right, I'll get that scheduled, and then I'll have Maria get everybody to call. It truly will take...
At 7:30, he can swing by and open up.
She's working two days a week.
She's only part-time now. Now it's Wednesdays and Tuesdays.
Two days, Wednesday and Thursday?
Wednesday and Thursday, usually Tuesdays.
Yeah. So we've got just a couple more... Couple more minutes, and we'll move to the next case. We did get some minutes.
January 6, I think we need to send that back, because there's way too many errors on my name.
There is. I mean, we're a little behind on these, but I don't know if everybody got them. And I hate to keep... Put it off again, but...
Right.
We got... We had last month.
And we got some of these, yeah, some of these meetings...
What it said is fine.
Three pages a minute.
What it said is fine, and it's just...
Yeah.
It just has to collect my... Not correct my name.
Yeah. So if the board's okay with it, we... I'll set aside some time next month, and I mean, here's...
Oh, that's a new one.
Oh, there's... This is one meeting.
Yeah.
Five pages a minute.
She hit the detail.
Yep. And I... Yep. So... Couple minutes, almost done.
Moving along, yeah. Yeah. He's buttoning up all the... He's buttoning everything up, making it nice and...
Everything pretty accurate on the minutes so far. I don't think she's missed anything.
He's... Everything he does to the nines.
I, uh...
Yeah, he's meticulous as hell.
I read through one of them, my head was...
Does a good job. Yeah.
No, I'm going to have Maria set aside like 15 minutes, right early next meeting, and we'll just get them all caught up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You should have Maria to...
Yeah.
To save the girl.
It's funny, you have kids like that.
Pull-ups.
Like my oldest son's an engineer.
Good minutes from a year ago, or whatever, and say, "This is what we're looking for."
The younger son, he didn't want to compete with him being an engineer.
Just capture what these meetings are about.
They used to say...
But now, I have a very, very, very close family.
This is worth the work.
Very, very close.
I mean, it's nice to be thorough, but I don't think...
She doesn't have to go to 5:00?
No. Agreed.
Proud of them all. Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go to the second case of the night, which is a continued public hearing for Kurt Nussel. I hope I didn't say that right. 79 North Street, and it's case number 2021-06. And I think Kurt's with us remotely.
You're muted, Kurt. No, that's good.
Okay, Kurt, so if you want to explain to us what's different this month than last?
There's nothing different. I just... I have a surveyor mark on the plan where we're actually at the existing side step, how far up the lot line it is.
Yes, I see that.
That was the supply I had from last month.
Yeah, we didn't know how far the rear podded deck was.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
In the side either. We didn't know exactly where it was.
So you... Do I have the new one?
The same one to there.
Yep, okay. So the deck is 4.4?
Yeah, that's to that landing, that's where his door is.
The closest.
And the stairs going down.
Okay. So Kurt, your... From the lot line to your side porch is proposed at 4.4?
I believe so. I don't have the plan in front of me. It's... Was it 4.1 or 4.4?
This plan I have says 4.4. It was drawn by SDD.
It's 4.4.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Again, that's the existing step.
Yeah, okay.
He has an existing set of stairs there that he's going to...
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, these are existing set, you're just going to make it new.
Yeah, that's all he's doing.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So they're already at this 4.4 now. You're just going to extend it to get to your back, back of your house. Okay, any board members have any questions for...
No, I'm good with it.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this?
Yeah, I guess so.
Oh, hey, just...
I'm your partner here.
Okay, you just need to identify yourself, sir.
My name's Kevin DeMuras, I live in 77 North Street.
Okay.
I'm your butler.
Okay.
These houses are extremely close together. It's because they've been in the same family for 75 years. Now, they're not from being the same family. It's literally 4.1, I think, is the closer thing than 4.4. And that's... The existing step we're talking about is a four-by-four platform that goes right to the back door. The deck's going to extend all the way along the back, into the back of the house. As the butler, I just want to say I'm against it. I don't think there's enough room there.
Okay.
Simple as that.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. All right. So anybody else that would like to speak on this application?
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, was it there before? I mean, did he just repair it?
It's there now.
Because the entrance stairs and a platform, so what he wants to do is run a little catwalk back, and he's going to put this little... He's going to put this little deck on, on the back. So the stairs are right here now. So he's going to extend this out, and then get to the little deck in the back. The gentleman that just stood up, his house is here, and he has a similar thing, just a mirror image.
It's existing, he's just extending it. And as he extends it, it gets further away from the lot line.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so anybody else that would like to speak on this?
Nothing.
Kurt, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, not really. What I was thinking, as far as for privacy, I thought maybe rather than doing, you know, a four-inch balance or spacing, maybe do solid railing on that side of the deck?
Mm-hmm.
And maybe go slightly taller?
Okay. Yep, that would be... That wouldn't be a zoning issue, that'd be whatever you propose.
Maybe saying that for Mr. DeMuras' benefit.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other questions, uh...
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The public hearing is closed. Does the board want to make a decision tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
I move that we approve the checking on 79 North Street. Docket number 2021-06, specified in the plan, so that was submitted to the zoning.
Okay. All right. So we'll just... We'll just identify the plan, John, just so there's no confusion.
Yeah, the plan on the... The bottom right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the 4.4... Yeah, okay, okay. So the setback on the side of the house where the existing staircase was, is still the same, but it's at 4.4 feet, and it tails back into a smaller deck in the back.
Okay. All right, that's shown on a certified plot plan. Okay. Yep. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lou, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got this. Is there anything... Is there anything he can do to make this better for you?
Well, the suggestion was certainly helpful.
It was good? You'd be happy with that?
Well, it's obviously going to get approved, so I guess I'd have to be.
Okay, but he wants it for... Hey, you know?
It was a good compromise.
I think so, yeah.
I think so. Everybody's got to be happy.
Yeah. Unfortunately, with the zoning, it's only about dimensions. The design and so forth is... Doesn't fall under our board. But I think it was a good compromise.
Fortunately, both houses hugged that centerline.
Yeah, probably both benefit from having some kind of a shield there. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. The application is approved unanimously.
What happened on that first one, approving?
Yes. Yep.
What do we know? 10 minutes.
I know. It's always the way, right?
Probably a good compromise that you suggested.
Yeah, I agree.
When you're going too speedy, now you got seven minutes.
Yeah. Well, actually... Well, Kurt, you're all... It's approved. We'll get the... We'll get a decision drafted by the board and to the town clerk as soon as possible.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you, John. Have a great evening.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. He's hanging around here, nothing.
Can I... We just had on here for discussion, North Brown. I don't know if there's any... Any updates that we...
Actually, quite a bit has transpired over the past week that North Brown are actually bringing WW contractors in to do the road. They're going to do the road in its entirety, to binder, one end to the other. They've been processing materials up there, screening room, getting rid of piles of materials, getting the sites cleaned up. They're doing a lot of work on Phase 1, Phase 2, with regards to market size of roads, fixing the green gardens, taking care of any runoffs that have been going on, getting that together, trying to get some semblance of completion on at the same time.
Oh, good.
They still have not issued any foundation permits up there. I told them once, I got a schedule from them on the due schedule. This will be in time. He's talking two weeks, and he should have binder.
Really?
Look how that goes.
Wow. Good.
You just have to be careful that the minute taker knows who was talking.
Oh, yeah.
Because she had Mr. Inhewood question marks next to him.
Oh, really?
Some of the other ones, so...
All right.
That previous comment was from Ken Frazier, the building commissioner.
Right. Yeah. For the minute taker, that was Mr. Frazier, building commissioner, just spoke.
On the next two items, we're going to scare those independently? For the applicant?
Well, it's... It is two different cases, but I don't have a problem combining them. I mean...
It's going to... We got to talk about them both at the same time, so...
Right.
I would think that we could just combine them.
Yep. Sometimes we leave 15 minutes, and it takes a half hour. What's the other ones, or carryover from last month?
Damn, you're not doing nothing then, huh? Just... You go one at a time?
Two... Oh, well, I got three going now, but...
Yeah, sure. You retire. Come on, you retire, and you get your office.
Well, it's why I won't let him stay home.
I don't think she wants me to be home.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why I've been married as long as I have, never home.
I'd say the same thing. I leave in the morning, leave in the afternoon.
Could be worse, right?
Yeah. Believe me, it's worse without him.
Mm-hmm.
Big time.
Yep.
Oh, you're so good, man.
We just have to wait till 7:30 to start. It was advertised for 7:30, and legally can't start until the time it was posted. The water's high, John.
Yeah, it was. I spoke to the chairman, and he took a flash board out from the gate, so we got it.
Good to go.
Is Mr. Flag our representative here?
Hi, Mr. Flag. I'm here and waiting for my representative. He's supposed to log in.
Okay.
Kevin Quinn, the engineer.
Okay. Mr. Flag, what I'm gonna do is, I think your special permit request and your variance request kind of go hand in hand. One's probably not good without the other. So I was gonna read the other advertisement and then we can discuss both at the same time.
Thank you.
I think that'd be the best way to go. The other case is a public hearing, case number two zero two one dash zero eight, Three Huff Road, and it is a variance request from Stephen Flag. It was advertised in the Telegram and Gazette and posted in the town hall, and it reads as follows. The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at seven forty-five Wednesday, June second, in the Douglas Municipal Center, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Steve Flag is requesting a variance in an rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to the MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, in the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section nine point two and Section four point one point three, Appendix B, Table of Dimensional Regulations. Seeking relief from the front yard and rear yard setback requirements on property located at Three Huff Road, Assessors Map one one one, Parcel forty-four. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. It was advertised in the Telegram on May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth. So. Is your applicant, I mean, your engineer?
The engineer logged in, Kevin? Is there anybody else logged in?
No, I don't see anybody.
Well, I'll have to answer your questions the best I can.
Okay, well, if you can explain to us what you're looking for and.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, so we're looking to get a special variance to build that new house there and to conform more to the law because where the house is located now, it's very close to one side of the boundary. It's actually right on the boundary. And I think we're fifty feet wide, and we have the plans right there. I think we're requesting, asking for thirty feet wide.
I guess Kevin's gonna call then. He's having a problem with the video link.
Okay.
But, yeah, so we're looking to move the house over from where it's presently at now, closer, yeah, further away from the right-of-way. And then have a setback, I think it's on the plans, at about ten feet per side.
Looks like six and fifteen.
Yeah, right, correct.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So they're gonna move it over six feet from the right-of-way and then the fifteen on the other side. So that gives, the right-of-way's ten feet, I believe. And then we got ten and sixteen on one side and fifteen on the other.
Okay, but you don't own the right-of-way?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
But as of, as right now, the house sits on the line. I think this is Kevin.
Hi, this is Kevin Quinn, the point engineer.
Hey, Kevin.
I apologize, I've had a problem with my video, so I'm gonna have to call in. My video seems to be out.
Okay.
If it's helpful, I'd be happy to go through my presentation on this project.
Yep, if you would, please.
Okay. First of all, I'm Kevin Quinn, the point engineer. On behalf of Steve and Julie Flag, the owners and applicants for this application. The Flag's propose to demolish the existing cottage on this property, construct a new home in a revised location. The application we filed for variance for front yard and rear yard setback and for special permit. The bylaw, in your bylaw, the frontage is defined as the side of the property which the which access is gained. And on this property, the driveway access is through the frontage that is along what's Parker Road, which, if you're standing in Huff Road facing the property, Parker Road is the road to the right. So we've dealt with the front property at that line, which is along Parker Road, and we've dealt with that consistently throughout our analysis of the site. So that when I refer to front yard setback or front yard, the frontage, I'm referring to actually the size it on Old Parker Road. We've applied for an application for variance for front yard. We seek to relieve, we seek relief to permit the front yard of six feet. The existing building encroaches into the adjoining property by four point four feet. So the proposed home with a front yard of six feet is actually a correction of more than ten feet. The property, the adjoining property, which we have but on the front, is actually the right-of-way for Parker Road or Old Parker Road, depending on how it's looked at. So this home, as it's proposed right now with a six-foot setback, would actually be approximately twenty-five feet from the next residential property. One of the difficulties that we've dealt with is that it's such an oddly shaped parcel. I'll come back to that in a minute. But the shape of the parcel is a challenge for us, right? I'll come back to that in a minute. The variance also requested for the rear yard, we're asking for a fifteen-foot rear yard. That basically came because there's another zoning district in town where a setback of fifteen feet is permitted for certain uses. We're trying to pick something that the board can see as a benchmark. These variance, both requests are necessitated directly as a result of the shape of the parcel. The parcel, when you see it, is very narrow and very deep. It's fifty feet deep and actually two hundred and sixty-nine feet wide. So it's a very oddly shaped parcel. A parcel of thirty thousand square feet, typically we would think we'd be able to set a house without any difficulty, but the shape of this parcel is so challenging, it makes it difficult. In fact, the front yard setback of fifty feet and the rear yard setback of twenty-five feet actually overlap. So it is impossible to locate a structure on this parcel that complies under the current setback zoning. I would submit to the board that a little interpretation of the bylaw would be a hard tip to the owner, but actually to the community too at large. The existing cottage is located in floodplain, and the proposed location is completely outside of floodplain. The changes have benefited the community because we're improving floodplain storage by getting that house out of the floodplain. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier, the existing building encroaches on the adjoining property by four point four feet, and this, the revised location of this building corrects that, cures that encroaching entirely. So those are both benefits that are approved, certainly to my client, but also to the community at large. It's not just our benefit. I would submit to the board that the board could find requested relief to be granted with, because there is no, not only no detriment, but there's actually ample benefit for the community because, as I've mentioned, the changes in the building location will benefit the community at large. We have also applied for a special permit. Billy Bishop Frazier found that the proposed building increases the degree of nonconformance over the existing cottage, and I don't disagree with that analysis. Under Section three point four point five, that condition can be approved by this board under a special permit. That refers, the degree of nonconformity he's talking about refers to the rear yard setback. The existing building is seventeen point four feet off the rear yard. Proposed building is fifteen feet off the rear yard, as I mentioned earlier. I would submit to the board also in this case that the limitation is due to the shape of the parcel. Again, because it's so narrow, it makes it very difficult to locate even a modest home and complies, impossible to, even the most modest home is impossible to be specified in a way that would comply. The board has, the bylaw provides standards that it asks the board to assess and find that there are no negative impacts. Standard one, traffic flow. Under the proposed use, it'll be a single-family home as it is currently. So there's no change in the use that would create an increase in traffic flow, impact safety, parking, or loading. There's also a standard that we have to show that social, economic, and community needs are served by this proposal. Well, certainly, as I mentioned earlier, because we're pulling this house completely out of floodplain and we're curing what is an existing encroachment on the adjoining property, I would submit to the board that those two factors alone make this special permit in the interest of the community, not just in the interest of my client. Adequacies utilities and other public services. The proposed home will not impact demand on utilities in any way, in any more than currently occurs. As I said previously, it's a single-family home now, and the proposed home would be single-family, would not increase demand of utilities. Neighborhood character and social structures. The new residents would be in a tractored modern home, will certainly contribute to the factor of, to the fabric of the neighborhood and a certainly social structure of the neighborhood. Impacts on the natural environment, there's no negative impact to the environment as a result of this. The current use of the property as a single-family home will continue, but will not create an increase in damage or impact to the environment. And finally, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. The town will realize an increase in revenue. The new home will certainly be assessed at a higher value, will generate a greater degree of revenue to the town, but the use of the property remains the same, so there would be no increase in town service, no impact on town service demand as a result of this home approved by the board. Can I answer questions of the board?
Okay. Is there any board members that have questions? Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, Kevin, if you don't, if you don't mind. So I went down in this past weekend. Of course, I talked to the owner. On the right side of that house, I picked it up on my phone. I didn't have the documents that were with me. But at the old Parker Road, this, now that has been, was it abandoned or it's still in the deed that way?
I'm sorry, the roadway itself?
Well, it says, you know, Parker Road, then the old Parker Road. But I guess what I'm looking at, yeah. Okay, I'm looking at the wall.
The status of that, it's, Parker Road is, as the survey says, the survey shows that Parker Road is a private road.
Yeah.
The deed is very old and not very clear, but it is a right-of-way. It's approximately twenty feet, although the exact width is not determined because it's part of that survey. But that is a flooding property to the Flag's property on that side.
Yeah, okay. That's why I wanted to know how wide it was down there, so.
Right.
If anyone had gone down, there is a really tight block. It's dressed up pretty well right now. It has three or four sheds and all that, but other than that, it's pretty tight. That's all I have.
Any other board members?
I do.
Okay, Mike?
The, your footprint that you have on your plan that you submitted, it appears to be...
I'm sorry, sir?
The footprint that you have plotted on the plan?
Yes.
It appears to be about twenty-nine feet by maybe seventy feet long? Is that correct?
It's D four, I believe, is the length.
Then is this plan to scale?
I'm sorry, say again, sir?
Is the plan to scale?
It is to scale, yep.
Okay, so if you take the red...
The building plan that we submitted to you, there was a sketch of the building plan, the building plan that Flag's had done, that showed you the actual dimensions of the property.
The property or the house?
I'm sorry, of the house, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So, the, the plan that was submitted, you got it dated February ninth. It has a big red rectangle that's in, that shows where the proposed house is gonna be, and that is longer than the lot is wide, so it has to be over fifty feet.
Oh, yeah, fifty-four is the length of, I'm just verifying now on the plan.
Then this plan can't be to scale. Unless you have a different plan than I'm looking at.
Well, our, our building plan is to scale insofar as...
Oh, you know, I'm including the deck on there as well, so that might be...
Yeah, the deck is shown on our, on our site plan, and it is actually shown on the architectural plan as well.
Okay, so getting back to your, the floor plan that you have, the first floor floor plan on the plans that you submitted, that plan number fifty, five two two, five nine W W from the architectural design website, it shows the garage that...
I'm sorry, I'd like to prevent this, I'm saving.
The plans that they submitted in their packet, the first floor plan?
Yep.
It shows a garage that is nineteen by twenty-four, and the twenty-four is going left to right in that entry there. So there's no way that this plan is twenty-five, twenty-nine feet across. Here's your mic, George.
Our plan does show that accurate. We depict that on our site plan, that that's the accurate dimensions.
Okay, I just pulled up the plan on the architectural design website, that plan number, that plan number which is plan number five two two, five nine W, W M. So it shows the overall length of it being fifty-eight feet, and it shows the width of it being thirty-three feet.
Yeah, their floor plan has adjustments to that, to that plan though.
Okay.
The Flags have made adjustments to the floor plan based on a couple of things. One is that we have to make it fit the site, and they have some preferences for how they'd like it laid out.
So you're saying the plans we got now are not in...
The floor plan is, depicts, depicts the floor, the floor concept that they would like to build, all right? And, but it deviates from the exact plans that the main effect, architecturaldesign.com, showed in the first place.
Yeah. Go ahead. Finished?
Yeah. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
All right. On the, looking at it from Huff Road, looking down the left side of the property line you have, or the rear line from, from what your application says, there's a shed there. Is that staying?
Yes.
That shed is staying?
The shed, the shed's being removed.
The shed's being removed, okay.
Yep.
All three of them?
Yes.
Yeah, all three of them.
Yeah, this is Steve Flag. Yeah, all three sheds are being removed.
I'm sorry, you said removed or moved?
Removed, okay.
Removed. Is there anything that would prevent that house from sliding back any further towards that shed? Well, you, if you take the fifteen feet and you take the six feet, if you balance it off, you'd be about ten feet off of each property line.
The flags have made adjustments to the floor plan based on a couple of things. One is that we have to make it fit the site, and they, they have some preferences for how they like it laid out.
So you're saying the plans we got now are not in-
The floor plan is depict, depicts the floor, the floor concept that they would like to build, all right? And, but it deviates from the exact plans in the, that the main effect, architecturaldesign.com showed in the first place.
Yeah. Go ahead. Finished?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Quinn?
Yes?
Yeah, all right. On the, looking at it from Helf Road, looking down the left side of the property line you have, or the rear line from, from what your application says, there's a shed there. Is that staying?
Yes.
That shed is staying?
The shed, the shed's being removed.
The shed's being removed, okay.
Yep.
All three of them?
Yes.
Yeah, all three of them.
Yeah, this is Steve Flag, yeah, all, all three sheds are being removed.
I'm sorry, you said removed or moved?
Removed, okay.
Removed. Is there anything that would prevent that house from sliding back any further towards that shed?
Uh, sliding, I-
Well, you, if you take the 15 feet and you take the 6 feet, if you balance it off, you'd be about 10 feet off of each property line. I'm just asking if that's, if there's anything that would prevent it from moving back, that's all. It's just my own curiosity.
I don't, I don't believe so, Steve. That, that, I mean, balance it, the only reason we showed it the way we did is that the front setback is 6 feet, but it actually provides about 25 feet separation from the house to the adjoining residential parcel. So you do get a significant buffer between the house and the house next door to the south. So we're trying to preserve as much as we can on that side so that we can, we can preserve as much rear yard setback as possible.
And I can appreciate that, it's just, my concern is the property lines, not so much the, the paper street or whatever it is.
Right. Yep, and I, I struggle to approve anything that's built 6 feet from the lot line. I haven't seen that happen in the past, um, for a new structure, unless it was something that pre-existing, pre-existing. But anything new, um, in 16 years, I don't remember anything ever getting approved that close to the lot line, and I don't personally think that it should, but-
Yeah, there's a lot of-
Let me ask, if I, if I may, is it the will of the board that that, that those front and rear setbacks be split?
Well, we haven't got to that point yet. It was just something that I had just brought up. We haven't even got to that point.
Right.
Right, okay.
I was just curious if there was anything that would prohibit you from moving that, just for my own peace of mind.
Right. Now, in answer to your question, no. We, we chose those setbacks to try to balance out the concerns of, um, buffer with adjoining properties.
Okay. Now, I'm gonna open up, see if we have anybody in the audience that has any questions for the applicant. Does anybody like to speak on this matter?
Yes. My name is Donald Closeup, I'm the butter on this other side from the, from the right of way.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on Seven Hup Road.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, I understand frontage, but what I don't understand is this setback. What exactly is that? It's, it's that to get away, I know the frontage is a 50-foot requirement.
Right.
But, and also moving, are they gonna move away from that right-of-way and move the house and everything towards the property line where I'm at? And the dwelling itself, how far will that dwelling be from our property line? Just a, just a few things off.
Okay, yep.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The, the plan as it's shown right now, that house is no closer than 15 feet from, from the property line. And, and that's, that's your property line, Mr. Closeup. It's 6 feet on the opposite side, but as I say, that 6 feet goes to the property line, but there's a right-of-way that goes beyond that property by about another 20 feet. So there's above 25 feet separation from the house to the, to the, um, the next property to the south.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn, our responsibility is the distance from the lot line to the structure, not from-
Understood, understood.
You know, so, um, did, ma'am?
I just wanted to make a point.
Yeah, you know, you just have to identify yourself, because we have a minute taker that needs to-
Marilyn Closeup.
Okay, Marilyn.
One of the owners at Seven Hup Road.
Okay.
And we're rebuttous to the boundary line on the west side of their property.
Okay.
If you're facing the lake. Uh, on one of these, um, they're talking about, uh, removing a single-family home, a two-bedroom cottage on the property currently. That is a, it's not actually a home, there's still a foundation, it's a trail ground that was renovated or made from, oh, no, no. And, um, what's the other one? Okay, let me, I'm looking at the first page here on the application. The lot area required by the IRA, I guess, residential-
Right. That's correct.
Okay, is 90,000 feet.
Right.
They per have 13,270 square feet, and yet it's checked yes. How does that comply with meeting the 90,000 feet requirement?
It, it does not, but because there's some type of a structure on there, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Yes.
So, I'm sure whenever this building was built, probably zoning didn't exist.
Well, that's the issue.
This may have been, been just checked and error.
You know, ma'am, you just have to identify yourself for the-
I'm Charlie Rashapal, and I live on 56 Parker Road.
Okay.
Across from the property. It's a trailer that has a roof built over it and a front porch closed in in front of it. Yeah, with axle, it's on, it's on tires, it's a trailer. It's not a building, just to clear that up.
So we're not, we're not taking a cottage, my name's-
You have to identify yourself.
Removing a cottage. My name's Bob Rashapal.
You know, we just have to do it for the minute taker so that she can-
I understand.
So we're not, we're not taking a cottage and removing a cottage, it's a trailer, and they're, they're not putting in a, another cottage to make it look good. Um, that's kind of a little bit built up in the, in the letters that you see. So, um-
Basically, they want to remove a trailer and put in a 3,000 square, what else?
3,000 square feet versus, versus the trailer there?
Yeah.
I mean, in, in this neighborhood, they're all private roads, they're all, all the average houses are anywhere from 800 to 1,500 square feet. This, this thing is just gonna, like, bomb up the whole area, and, um, it's gonna block our, it's gonna block our view to the lake. We have the U property right now. We're gonna be looking at the, the-
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, these, these folks are not wrong. Um, the, the existing house there was a trailer, it's been added on to, there's been a roof constructed over it, it's been, it's, it is a, a two-bedroom home. Um, there's not much question that what my client wants to do is build a decent home. I mean, they're not gonna, um, they're not gonna build another trailer, um, they're gonna build a decent home. It's, the proposed home is two bedrooms, it's no, no more capacity in terms of resident capacity than exists right now. And, um, in terms of, of, um, the impact, well, it's gonna be a nicer home. It'll, it'll certainly be an improvement over the, the cottages that's there now.
Yep, why can't we go back to 1,500 square feet at a single level instead of-
Excuse me, whoa, 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 whoa. This is pre-existing, the house has been there for all these years, maybe 40 years, you know, before zoning. That's the idea of it. I was there, I saw a building, I saw a porch. I realized that I saw, out of the trail, it's taken up one side of it. If you're looking at the lakeside, the six side, you could just tell it's in the three pattern, you know? And I understand it, but if you looked at the building itself, the structural part faces the lake, this part of the home. And I'm not arguing that it is a trailer, not, it is, but it's been, over the years, it's changed like every other house that's down here, every other house.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a point where you definitely need to overwhelm the piece of property.
That's all they-
And we have a few issues with the septic system too.
Yeah, if you go to the drawback, whether you come back to Parker Road, further you come back, there's four wells at issue here that aren't very far away. When you put in this, we saw the plans on the septic system, and if you, if you measure from the wells over, it's a little short.
Again, that's part, you know, that's not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go ahead, Joe.
The septic system is designed by engineers that deal with this on a daily basis.
No, I understand.
We're here for the zoning itself. So, do you have a set of plans like this?
No, I don't have, I have the-
May I, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I don't need to butt in on any of this, I'm just trying to help the guys out, but I'm here to-
I think of-
So the house that he has is right here. The shed, the shed, the shed, the trailer, okay? So right now-
I think we're-
He's probably almost the same, he's-
Ken, I think we, we had a case, uh, several years ago where there was a trailer and not a house. And at the time, we had town council involved, so I think, I think it was a completely different interpretation.
I don't think they consider a trailer to be-
Right.
A trailer is a trailer, whether they add on to it or anything, it doesn't have a permanent foundation, it's off, it's still my thing, so it's still a trailer.
Yeah.
I don't think they can consider it a permanent structure.
If, if it was all-
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead. Hey, John, John, John.
There's several conversations going on, and I'm not able to hear the discussion of the board.
I understand. John, John, we need to go-
I asked the board to try to maintain one discussion that's not-
We need to have. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn, just so you understood what was going on, John Barbera, one of the members, had brought the, um, plot plan over to the audience just to show them what, what you were proposing.
I see.
And I agree with you that there was a couple of conversations going on. So anyways, we're gonna move forward at this point.
Yes. So, um, I think from years ago, there was a case, there was, where someone was trying to replace a home with a trailer.
Replace a home with a trailer, or replace a trailer with a home?
I'm sorry, replace a trailer with a home.
Yeah, no, I just-
Yeah, sorry, wording was off. And, um, town council was involved, and I believe there was, I think there was more to it than, than replacing a cottage with a, with a home. And-
Mr. Chair.
Was it? I don't remember who it was, but, um, so-
The-
Whatever the board thinks, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to getting town council's opinion, or get, at least get them, um-
Well-
To attend our next meeting.
Mind if I make a comment?
No, go ahead, Mike.
Um, I don't think we could finalize a decision tonight based on the simple fact that we don't have accurate plans to reference on our decision, um, that would show what we're approving, because I have some conflict between the application and what I'm looking at on a plot plan. I wouldn't be comfortable with just vaguely referencing a, a set of plans. So they would need to show that. I would like to see the dimensions on this plan as well, to say that this is, if it's 29 feet, 33 feet, whatever it is, show the dimension of that footprint, so then we understand what it is that we're approving. It's gonna help the building commissioner, um, in his process if it reaches his desk.
Right. And with the proposed rear yard of 15 and the front yard of 6, um, I struggle with, with 6 feet.
Well, I, I would-
And I, I think the house could be narrower as well.
I would suggest to them that they look at that and see if they come up with any other alternatives to it. It's not, it's like, the plans don't show that these sheds are gonna be raised.
Right.
Um, that may be helpful for the board and the building commissioner as well. Uh, that woman over there had a question, I asked her to hold on for a few minutes, we may-
Yep.
Want to acknowledge her.
Okay, ma'am?
In, um, in the application, on the east side of the property, of their property, they need their encroaching on the right-of-way.
Correct.
Now, we've been there, my family has been there over 70 years, and the right-of-ways, from my understanding, were, there's a right-of-way five lots over between, um, Snow's property, and I don't know the name of the other one, where the back residences can use a waterfront there, and they can use, uh, take their boats. And it was my understanding that the Parker Road right-of-way, although it's not developed, neither is the whole area, Parker Road and, uh, all the way, does Parker Road go all the way up to Oak Street? Okay, all that area, there's still opportunities for housing, and I would think that that right-of-way could literally be developed as both a swimming area that these back locks have access to, and maybe a boating grid.
It would have to be an NDD.
That was our understanding for years and years and years. It was never developed, but either was that, when we, when my family purchased it, all of that was swamped, pure swamp, you know? And the whole frontage was changed, and the boundary lines were evened out, except for the one, the flag property. That, because of the right-of-way, that was, uh, the frontage on that was very small. And what I don't understand, if the flags need 4.4 feet, they're going into the right-of-way, is that, does a private owner have the right to do that?
That's what he's correcting.
That's what he's trying to correct. That's what he's trying to correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
One second, sir.
Yeah, those are the only part that he-
Ma'am, it's on, it's on the plans there, the existing structure it's on there is 4.4 feet along the right-of-way.
And they're trying to correct that.
They're trying to correct that.
It exists on there.
Yes.
It's currently there.
So instead of 15 feet away, that, that trailer's home that's there is probably 17 or 18 feet away from your property line.
Okay, while the rest of it is 50.
The roadway going down is, I think is only 10 feet, correct?
No, no, the, uh, boundary between flag property and ours, their house needs to be 15 feet all the way up, all their structures.
I don't know, send the flags, I don't know who they are.
Well, that's the applicant, Joe.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm sorry. And what you, what the plan says there, 6 feet on one side and 15 on the other.
Is what they're proposing.
That's what they're proposing.
Can we, can we stop that and see what Mr. Quinn wants?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Quinn, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, no, you've already clarified, I was gonna say, it's just that my, my client's proposed plan proposes to rectify the encroachment that, that person referenced.
Correct, correct, yeah. You know, I didn't have a chance to go to the site. I, I'd like to do a site walk myself, get a better visual on what, what we're hearing, and, um-
That was down there Sunday was reading.
I don't think it would be a-
And can we get the dimensions added to this plan and get an accurate footprint of what his proposed houses?
Yeah, certainly. And I, and I'd like to get town council to attend remotely or in person, because there was definitely something about that one case, and it was handled differently, replacing a trailer with a home than it would be replacing a home with a home. If I'm saying that correctly, so, um-
So we should ask the applicant to, should continue it, or we want to continue?
Yeah, I think we can, yeah.
Well, if you want to go to the site, which is-
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then I'd like to see if town council's available for-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Kevin Quinigan, if this board, if the board, um, wants to walk the site or, or confer with town council, we consider the request a, a continuance of the, of the hearing.
Okay, all right. So we have a, yeah, I, I think we'd like to-
Is he requesting the continuance?
Yeah.
Then he's gonna give us 30 days on that.
Correct. So, uh, Mr. Quinn, our, our policy is if, if you get a continuance of, till the next meeting, we would get a continuance on a, the timeframe for making a decision by the same-
That's fine.
By the same amount. So if you could, um, send our, our staff, Maria, just a, a letter to that effect.
Two of those.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be one for the variance and one for the special permit, and-
Yes, and, and you want to, and you want to extend the decision period of the board as well?
By the same amount, one month.
Yep, not, not a problem.
Okay, and, um, is that, um, would it be helpful if we ask Mr. Quinn to join us at the site?
No.
I think that'd be a good idea, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Quinn, could you plot the actual footprint onto that plot plan, the proposed footprint?
Sure.
That way, because in my mind, it's contradicting. So I just want to know...
No, it's a busy plan. It is certainly a busy plan. There's a lot of information on that.
No, I'm following all that stuff. I'm looking at their proposed floor plan from, and then I understand it's just a rendering off of the computer, but I just want to make sure that we have proper reference on that plan.
Right. And you're saying that the footprint that we show on the site?
Yes, yep. On the, on that plot plan that you submitted?
Yes.
The zoning plan? If you could put the actual footprint on there and with dimensions, so then we know what we're looking at.
We'll dimension it right up for you.
Yep.
It is shown in red lines, the proposed building is shown in red lines. What we can do is make that more, we'll darken it up and we'll identify the dimensions of the, of the plan.
I can see that red box perfectly clear. I just have no dimensions on it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the red is perfect.
Yeah, and if you could note that those sheds will be removed.
Yep.
That would be good. Do we want to set something up with Mr. Quinn now? Do you want to go back, John?
Yeah, I'll go back, yeah.
John, do you want to go?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mike?
If you have enough people there, you got to call a meeting then.
I understand.
You know what? I can back up because I was already there.
Well, I don't know if somebody can point out, your buddies could point out.
Not necessary, John, I'm just pointing that out just to make sure.
Yeah, no, it's no problem. I just called a meeting at the... What works for everybody.
For the, for the audience members or...
Yeah, that's why I want to let them know too, if they're interested in what Mr. Quinn has to say at the site.
All right.
They can attend. So...
You tell me.
Whatever works.
Some Saturday morning or this Saturday or following Saturday or...
Saturday morning sounds good.
Yeah. Okay, what time?
Mr. Steve Flag, Saturday morning is perfect.
Okay.
Mr. Quinn, is that fine with you?
That's fine, sir. Just tell me the time and I'll be there.
All right. Nine o'clock?
9:00 AM.
All right, great. We appreciate it. And anybody is welcome to join us as well, so we can all get...
And that is this coming Saturday, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Yep.
What is this, Dan, what's the other thing?
This Saturday.
The engineer for the flags is going to come, meet us at the site and explain things, point things out to us to help us with a decision.
I have a question. Now, does the variance get approved before concerns about septic system?
The septic system would be with the Board of Health.
Okay, but is the, is this application approved before discussion with the Board of Counsel?
Mr. Quinn, have you been to the Board of Health yet?
We have not, Mr. Chairman. What we want to do is finalize whatever dementia relief we have with this board. We have to also file with the Board of Health and Conservation as well.
Right, right. And just so you know, when they file with Conservation, you will be notified as in a butter, what night and time the Conservation meeting is. The Board of Health doesn't notify you, so you may want to stay in contact with the Board of Health if you have questions about the septic system.
Okay, in describing the property and the new residents, they commented that it will affect the area enhanced by moving the residence and building that they want up there further back. Now, I haven't looked at it, but depending where the, how many, five, let's say, what do they need for a septic system? We have a surface wall and that goes uphill, so they're going to be up higher than we are.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's a Board of Health issue and that isn't anything that we take into consideration.
It's actually on the plan as a pump system.
You're just too far.
You get a good Board of Health.
So they haven't been to the Board of Health?
I'm sorry?
They haven't been to the Board of Health?
No.
John, we can't, John, 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 we can't keep having conversations. A minute taker and it's not fair to the applicants that have multiple conversations going on.
So, so we're going to meet at nine o'clock this coming Saturday morning. We're going to continue the public hearing until our next meeting, which is the first Monday in July. I don't have a calendar, I'm sorry.
I'll go get my phone.
It's going to be the fifth.
Okay.
No, that's, no. They're celebrating the Fourth of July on that day, holiday. It shows it on my calendar, so...
I have a calendar.
13.
I got it?
No.
I'm sorry.
We all missed the Fourth of July, so the fifth is that Monday, so...
Yeah, but we don't meet till Wednesday.
Right.
Oh, Wednesday, okay. Never mind.
Well, we're good.
The seventh.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for the clarification.
All right. So the public hearing is going to be continued until July 7th at 7:00 PM. And we just need a motion to continue the hearing in a second?
Second.
Are we going to, because we're going to meet on the 5th of June at nine o'clock at the site. Do we want to continue this meeting till then?
No, I'll open up another meeting when we get there.
Okay.
Yeah, if we have a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget, to continue this public hearing till July 7th at 7:00 PM. And again, anybody has any questions, you're welcome to meet us at the site on Saturday morning and hopefully we'll all get some answers that we're looking for. Okay. So, did we vote on that?
Yeah, we didn't vote on it, yeah.
Okay, I think so. Okay, so we have a motion to continue by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good night.
All right, so...
Okay, oh, running late on this one.
Well, you, we don't have to wait this time.
Right. Okay, the next agenda, is the applicant here? For Richard? Okay, I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name, sir?
Hayher. Hayher.
Hayher, okay. All right. The next agenda item is the public hearing for Richard Hayher, case number 2021-0965 Bigelow Road. This was... I'm going to get my paperwork straight here. The, this public hearing was advertised in the Telegram Gazette and it was posted in the town hall and it read as follows. "The town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 8:00 PM for Richard Hayher, who is requesting a special permit in a rural agricultural RA zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 4A, Section 9, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures, to construct a new home and septic system on property located at 65 Bigelow Road, Assessors Map 111, Parcel 17. A copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated." It was advertised in the Telegram Gazette on May 19th and May 26th. Mr. Hayher, are you representative here?
I don't.
You're representing yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, would you like to join us up here? We could take that file. So if you want to explain to the board what you're proposing and...
Yes, certainly. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. This piece of property was purchased by my father-in-law back in the 50s and he built a small camp there, dug a hole, built an outhouse. Actually, he and his family would stay there during the summer. He would commute back and forth through his job in Worcester and they would spend the summer there. I first went there in 1961, actually almost 60 years to the day, with my, the first date I had with the woman who became my wife. And by 1980, Ray had wanted to sell the property. He was then living in Florida and just spending his summers up here. And I purchased the property at that time. We would come for summer vacations and we'd come for long weekends during the summer with my three kids. And I spent a lot of hours trying to keep the thing upright. And it really has gotten to the point now where it is really not livable. And so I would propose to build a new structure. That structure would be to, would be moved, now the present structure is almost on the property line. This structure would be more centered on the line. Of course, it would be bigger. It would, I think, meet all the setbacks from the property line, from the waterfront, from the, from the road. But it is, of course, on a, on a non-conforming lot, because it doesn't meet the acreage, the square footage. But it would be moving a structure that's on the property line, so it's not on the property line. It would be replacing an outhouse with a septic system. The septic system's been approved. It's all been approved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any board members have questions for Mr. Hayher?
So, I was there again Saturday. We had talked on the phone when I got there because I couldn't find it. It was all I was, was 65 Main Street. Now, this is what it, that's what our house is now. That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I was just curious because I didn't see, I mean, you've got 220 feet of frontage here, which is substantial.
Yeah. You know, over the years, I should add, when I first started to come here, they were all small camps and I was, as was, I would say, the most modest of the camps. Many of those, not all of them, but many of those have been replaced, some of the year-round homes. And ours would be certainly no, no bigger than the newer homes. There still are, you know, some of the original camps, but the majority have been replaced over the years.
Okay. Any board members have any questions?
Your septic design, system is designed for a two-bedroom system? Says 220 gallons per day?
I would suspect so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it's, we're...
It calls out one-bedroom, but it looks like it's designed for two bedrooms. And then looking at your plans that you submitted, the, the house plans, even though it's called one-bedroom, it looks like a two-bedroom, it's got a full bath upstairs in your home office.
Yes, they, you know, the, the designer said that many people would rather have their one-bedroom upstairs and not downstairs. I mean, not me. I want it all downstairs, 75 now. And they would also want, one of those bathrooms to have a bathtub, which I don't want to have.
And I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious as to why you call it out as a one-bedroom house.
Well, we were replacing a one-bedroom.
I believe, I don't know if I'm right, Lou, but I, I believe the minimum size septic system has to be designed for two bedrooms. I believe that's Title V. Not 100%, but 99% that that's the minimum size septic, but...
Well, if this was approved as a one-bedroom house, would that cause an issue for this gentleman?
No, I would say it's overdesigned.
No, 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 no. The plan itself, because we're going to reference his plan in his application, so that it's a one-bedroom house.
Yeah.
Would that cause an issue for him at any point? Would that be a question for the...
I guess we just have to act on it. We just have to act on what he submitted, I guess. Okay. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak on this application? Sir?
Yeah, we're on the bottom.
Yeah, you just need to identify yourself on a minute taker.
Richard Fuller.
Okay.
84 Bigelow Road.
Okay.
We just put in a new septic system. You're correct. We had a one-bedroom home, but the newer one does not have. And they have to design according to market. Every new system has to be a two-bedroom minimum, which then allowed us to have the second bedroom. It happened, one, unfortunately, we don't have these small children, and he chose living with us, fortunately. So, that is the rule. It has to be designed for two bedrooms. I'll speak further to it, is that it definitely will enhance the area. It's the last open lot among the end of 5 Road, Bigelow Road, like five houses, three of which are just, so it'll help the area. A lot of people use it now to put their leaves, trees, sometimes they have to move because they're lazy, leave them in the road. So, I'm getting old, a little misty areas, but it'll make that life a little bit easier if that area is, that's the goal. In the septic system, I don't think there's a septic system further away from the water than what that septic system is. So, from all threats to the environment, there are none, I think it's a perfect situation and even has to be, you know, the septic.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak on this? Sir?
Hi, I'm Tim O'Brien. I am, I'm the caretaker of 86 Bigelow Road on behalf of Louise Winkler, President of the Butter, to Mr. Hay. She doesn't have a problem with us here doing anything with this property that you deem appropriate. She's assuming that the property has been surveyed appropriately, so that, you know...
Yeah, there's a survey stamp on it.
...clearly defined, and that anything that he puts on the property would enhance the value of her property. So she doesn't have a problem with it at all.
Okay.
I just want to say that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. Excuse me, you people, for it or against it?
Who are we?
Fire it?
Fire it?
Oh, yes, definitely. You are firing it?
Yep.
It's going to enhance? Sure, you fire it or against it?
I don't have anything to do with this.
Oh, okay. So you people are firing it?
Definitely.
So you people are firing it, I'm firing it too.
I just want to point out that the only thing this application is lacking is area. He meets all the setbacks, the frontage setback, the sideline, the rear, so it's just a matter of having a small lot. But he's able to build within the zoning setbacks. So that's actually unusual and a good thing. He's just lacking area, but...
He's helping us to make it less challenging.
He is, and actually it's 27,000 square foot lot, which is pretty large for a lake lot.
Yeah, it's huge.
So, if the board has any more discussion on this application?
I'm there, yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
Motion to close public hearing.
All right.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick to close the public hearing for Richard Hayher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. The board like to make a decision tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the application by Richard Hayher, number 2021-09, for a special permit, referencing the plot plan dated 5/12/21, drawn by, is that Spadia? special permit, referencing the plot plan dated 5/12/21, drawn by Zet Spadia, Datterin Design.
Richard Goslin.
Richard Goslin, yeah.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the request for a special permit. Do we have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, all right, it's seconded by Mr. Tosino. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's unanimous, and your special permit's approved, we will get it drafted, we need to get it to the town clerk, and we'll do that as quickly as possible. Well, thank you very much. Unfortunately, we only have part-time helper, so, on ZBAM, but we'll get it done as quickly as possible.
All right.
Well, we already did our update from Ken.
Yep.
I guess that's, that's about it for right now.
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara to adjourn, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the meeting's adjourned at 8:30.